We have Mr. Prey here with some Drama Club kids.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. How are you all? Can I work that from here by any chance? Or is that probably not... Oh, are you? Oh, is that this? Oh, fancy. Okay. Could use this for my classroom. All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. How are you? Good to hear. Good. My name is Mr. Prey and the general director of this year's play, which is going to be World Dolls Willy Wonka for any of you who have not quite heard yet. Before we begin, I would like to introduce some of my helpers for tonight. They're going to be joining us all the way from Imagination Land. So if we can have them come in, that'd be great. Thank you very much. So like I said, we're going to be doing Willy Wonka this year. So we wanted to bring a little bit of whimsy to everyone, a little bit of chocolate, too, while we're at it. Just in case you maybe didn't have enough chocolate or enough whimsy in your life. So here you go. Just making life a little bit sweeter for everyone. Thank you very much for bringing us today. Very nice. Thank you very much. I want a little question. So just as a heads up, thank you very much. For the uninitiated, the production that we're going to be doing is about Willy Wonka. If you are not quite familiar with that show or with that movie, it is about Willy Wonka, who is the owner of a chocolate factory, and the children of Imagination Land, who are going to be trying to win a chance in a lifetime supply of chocolate, as well as the keys to Candy Heaven. Young Charlie Bucket, who is the protagonist of our play, is the poor child with only a head of cabbage to his name and just may be the only soul pure enough to take the reins. But first, we have to find out, will he survive the gauntlet of the eccentric chocolatier? To find out, you'll have to join us March 10th at 7:00 PM, March 11th at 7:00 PM, or March 12th at 2:00 PM. We decided to put this show on this year because we wanted to bring a whimsical production to the community. We feel this is a perfect opportunity to bring some laughs, some fun, have a great experience in a time when life can seem very dreary. The colors and excitement of Willy Wonka's factory are sure to bring a smile to everyone's face. All of the kids, we just came from rehearsal just now. The kids are still in their costumes. We just put all of those props together. And the kids have been working very hard, all of us adults. Everyone has been working very hard on this. We're very excited to put this show on. And we hope that we get a lot of people to see this. Because everyone's been working so hard, it has really been a real community experience. We've had support from not only parents, other schools. Of course, the custodial staff has been really great in making sure that when I do lock myself out of the building, they let me back in, which is always nice. And really, we just want to celebrate everyone. We really want to make this a great experience. So if you could, take a quick look at my slides up here. I do have some posters to hand out for people, some papers to show with this information, just in case you do not know. It will also be going up on the website and also on the socials. But also, speaking of a community effort, if you could, we do have a need for props. So I'm putting this out to the community. If you have any of these things, the Drama Club would be very happy to accept them, whether they are clogging up your garage, or raped by your couch, or whatever it might be. Just by all means, bring it to the school, give it to us. We will find something to do with it. We're looking for fake food. We'll also accept real food, if you have any of that. We need some old bowls for Charlie Bucket and his family to eat out of. We need some old disposable cameras. If anyone, everyone here should know what that is, so that would be nice. Some old flip phones. Again, I feel like this crowd should know that, be pretty familiar with that. We do need a coat rack. I know, again, we don't really use those very often, but if you have some. Any chef hats? We have some chefs, some cooks that are going to be dancing around, so we want to make sure that they look the part as well. We're always in need of black cloth for one reason or another. We never have enough of it for some reason. I'm not sure why. I've been looking everywhere for snoasberries that actually taste like snoasberries. I know they're out of season at this time. But if you do have any, please let us know. And then any cleaning, painting supplies, whether those are rollers, brushes, disposable pans for that, just to help with the community group that is going to be coming in on the 19th. We're going to be having parents come in to help paint some props, put some props together. I'm going to try to hide all of the surprises as much as possible. But like I said, this has really been a great community experience. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Squire for inviting us here tonight to speak about this, to kind of get the word out. It's coming up very quickly. We have a lot of work to do and we're very excited to do it. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to invite everyone to it. It's going to be a great show and I really do hope everyone comes out. Are there any questions about anything from the board? As far as dates, times, or anything?
Well, Mr. Prey, thanks for taking on the roles, director. How many students are involved in the production?
That's a great question. Actually, it's the first time this year we've ever had a middle school Drama Club. And we've actually pulled some middle schoolers into our production this year, which has been great. It's going to fill up the stage a little bit. And it's always great to have the younger kids join this as well and get them working with the older kids. I think at this point, we're always sort of moving kids in and out. And there's doctor's appointments here, there's vacations there. But we're right around 50 kids. For the long answer. But good question. Thank you. Again, we're very excited to not only have middle school students working, but middle school teachers as well. Mrs. Taj Bosch and Mrs. Mozilla have both taken on that role for the middle school Drama Club. They're working very diligently, building cabbages and walnuts for us at the moment. You'll find out what those are for when you come to the play. But it's been, like I said, a great, just everyone, it's been a lot of hands on debt for this. It's a very big show. So it's been nice to have such great help. Are there any other questions that you might have? And I can tell you now without any spoilers. All right. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing you all. And I got to get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Prey, if you want to... The gentleman from wrestling team?
Hello. I am junior captain, Joseph Martinez, alongside Neil Murphy and Max Wilson. We are captains of our CA wrestling team. And we'd like to share with you guys. This past weekend, we took a trip down to Tamrac High School and won our back-to-back Section 2 Class C championship. We had four team wrestlers this tournament. Ten qualifiers for this next weekend, or this weekend's tournament in Glens Falls. And there were eleven schools at this tournament. Each one around our school size. And we had three champions individually in their weight classes. Seven more placed fourth or better. And then we went to the second tier tournament.
We also beat a team that we previously lost to in the year being Coboskill. And we beat them by six points in the final.
Which is very close decision, in case you weren't aware.
Congratulations. So what happens next? Is there something this coming weekend?
Yes. This is state qualifiers. It is to, it's a tournament that if you place top two, you then move on to states, newer states. And yeah. And that's our next goal for all wrestlers participating in Glens Falls. So we're hoping to get a few more names up on the banners. And that's it.
Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Next, going to discuss the video links, if that's...
But I'm not nearly going to be as exciting as Mr. Prey. I apologize. It is not going to be that exciting. But we just wanted to give you an update. So we have just finished doing our screening for Fastbridge. So we have, which I know I've shared with you, the data. So overall, if you look at where we were in the fall down to the winter, traditionally, in the spreadsheet that Randy shared with you, you'll see traditionally in the winter, we go down a little bit. And then we make a nice sharp jump back up at the end of the year. So we're excited where we are. We obviously still have some work to do. But you'll see there, a lot of places didn't dip at all. And where we did dip, it seems to be a small dip. So this is our overall reading data. And I know you take time to go through it, so I'm not going to read it all to you. What I wanted to show you is... So what I then took from those sheets, because this is the way that I like to look at the data. You can look at the data in a variety of different ways. You can compare fall to the winter, fall to the end of the year when we have that data, and how we do end of the year, end of the year, end of the year. But one of the things that we've been talking about as an administrative group is where are we at compared to where we were pre-COVID? Because we all know COVID obviously caused us to have some gaps. There were some issues with students being out of school for a long period of time. And then even when we brought them all back in September, though, you know, the kids could be in school five days a week. We were lucky to do that. We did have a lot of accidents because of all this need to quarantine and things with COVID. So obviously, like most schools, we had an impact from COVID. So what I did is I took the data back in 1920. So all the students took Fastbridge for the last time in that school year in the wintertime. So the first come that you see in the 1920 school year, that is what our Fastbridge score was. And it's around January that we take it, usually the first week or two of January. So I compared that to where we were in the same wintertime for each of the successive school years. So you can see where we started. So I'm going to walk through this one. So to explain this a little better. So back in 1920, you look at this cohort. So this particular cohort, which is now in... I'm going to tape for you. You know, I'm going to have to have this roll because I think it's going to be... Yeah, so... So this one is an eighth grade. Yeah, the green one right there. There we go. So if you look at this year's current eighth grade. So we're going to trail them back. So back in 1920, in January, when they took the AMAP on Fastbridge, they scored with 67% of our students at or above mastery on AMAP. So they don't notice, there wasn't a big drop, which was great. And if you follow the trajectory down, a little bit down into 21, 22, which you'll see that right now they're at 73%. So this is a nice example of where they started to where they are now. This is the same group of kids, obviously minus anybody moved out and adding anybody new in. They're now at 73% at or above grade level. So now if you look at the reading data, you'll see that back in 1920, which would be before we did the COVID pause, the reading data was at 64% at or above. And you'll see, we slid down to 55% is where we're at now. Now, we're making progress from where we were in 21, 22. This is kind of showing us the dip. So this would be, we did fairly well in the wintertime of 2021. But we did dip down last year and now we're starting to climb back up again. So that is how you read the data. Any questions on how to read the data when we go through each kind of cohort? What, seventh grade? So same here, because you'll see, this one kind of looks a little bit more like what we would expect would happen with the COVID pause. So we started off with 56. We paused, when they came back, we were down to 37% when they took a following year in January. So now we're starting to climb back up again. So we're at 42%, still off of our 56. So not back to where we want to be with this particular cohort, but making progress going up. For reading, it was at 55%. And right now, we're standing at 49%. So we're still not back to where we were before COVID, but we're making progress. Back up there. So now sixth grade, same thing. So we started out when they were in third grade, they were at 64% at or above. Right now, they're 57% at or above. They were going back up again, but not quite at that 61% yet. In the A reading, starting at 61%, and right now they're at 67%, which that's what we like to see, because that means they've come back at least to the levels that they were at pre-COVID. Fifth grade, Cindy started out in second grade. Nice solid numbers with that 74%. We dipped down and now we're starting to climb back up. In A reading, we were at 61% and we're at 59% currently right now. So fourth graders, they were first graders back during the pause. Started there at 64%. Right now, we're at 59%. So we still got a little ways to go to get back up to that 54. In the A reading, we are at 51% and we're now at 65%. So that's a nice success story there. Third grade, started at 53% pre-COVID. We are now at 66% for math. For reading, started at 40% in kindergarten. And now we're at 51% reading at or above in third grade. Now, I left second grade on here because while they were not in school during the pause, some of them may have been in preschool, so they made a pause for preschool. They weren't impacted by that 2021 school year with the need to quarantine and the fact that the kids with masks and a little bit separate. So just to let you see how they came in, starting, so they were at 46% with math. And now they're at 63%. For reading, they started at 28% and now they're at 53%. And our first graders, more traditional, you know, when they came in, it was a little bit more of a traditional school year, though we still did have a math and some distancing. So that was 50%, 61% in math, 29% because they're now about at 40% in math. So how are we working on improving the scores? Because obviously, we're excited when we see some progress. We still have some areas we need to make some more progress in. So in math, what we've started doing this year, we did a little bit last year as well, is really taking a look at whole class issues. So if there is a gap in a particular content or skill set, how do we address it for the whole class? Because what we were finding is sometimes you would address it for this pocket of kids or this pocket of kids. But the reality was, because of the pause, because of the having to miss bits and pieces of schooling through the quarantine, whole classes were missing particular skill sets or content. So we're starting to really take a look at the classes as a whole and making sure that we've covered everything and that if there are a skill gap, it's a small amount of kids, which then we look at those students in RTI and do some pullout work with them. But if it's a larger scale issue and it's a large number of students going back and providing some whole class support, so you can make sure that everybody has it and you don't miss anybody. We also use Reflex Math. I think you've heard us talk about that before, as a computer mathematics program where kids can practice their fact fluency. We use iXL as well. Then we have, this year, we have two part-time math coaches. Plus, we have a Questar three-step developer. So among them all, they're the ones that had the data meetings with the grade levels. They go over the data that we get from Fastbridge and math. We're using the Spring Math, which is my next book with the pilot. So they'll go over the data with teachers and take a look at what is a whole class issue, what is a small group issue? Is there something that they could add a little bit more manipulative in or particular activity in that would help students really grasp that concept? So again, with Spring Math, that is something that we're piloting this year with some teachers. That program is a whole class program. So all the kids get the intervention until the class gets to a particular benchmark that says the majority of the class has this skill. And then it starts flagging students who still need to work on that skill, but it lets the rest of the class move forward to do another skill. So we're working through Spring Math. I will have at the next board meeting, because right now the teachers are working on forms to fill out to show their data for each of the pilots, so that you can see how successful the pilots are being. They're preparing a lovely presentation on March 17th. So if any of you are available, that's a whole day conference day. They'll be doing presentations in the morning. So you can hear from the teachers what they're thinking about their programs and the data that they've collected. That'll be Fastbridge data, but also data from the programs themselves. And then I just had today our math panel. So we've started taking a look. I know we talked about the ELA panel we did last year, which is taking a look at the curriculum. Was it covering what we needed it to cover? Do we need to start taking a look at supplemental programs? So we're now starting that with math. So we've just begun that. We're going to take a look currently in kindergarten through fifth grade. We're using the math modules from the state. Then in sixth grade up to Algebra II, we use eMath instruction, which is a... And what are we doing for reading? That's okay. So as you know, we have the presentation, we've discussed this. We're piloting some programs. The big issue that we found last year when we looked over the data was that our kids were missing phonics skills that seemed to be the primary issue, especially in younger grades. So we've got some supplemental phonics programs going on. And then we also have one program that we're piloting that's a comprehensive ELA program. That might be something that we need to ensure. For all of those pilots, the teachers are filling out a worksheet that breaks it down in terms of what does that particular program cover with the standards? Is it getting to everything? Is it, is there still stuff that is being missed in a particular standard for that program? So that we can then at the end of the year assess, is that program going to get us everything we need to make sure that our kids do better and can read? Again, every time we do the Fastbridge and the diagnostics, the architect writers make the classroom teachers to go over the data, take a look at it, and see what they need to work on. And then we also had book studies. Last year, we had a book study specifically on the science of reading that was voluntary for teachers to participate in. It happened outside of school. We had a number of teachers participate in that. And then it was followed up on a professional development day here in school for people that did not have it. And we're here on campus on that particular day. And this year, we're doing another book study. Just blanked out the name of the book. But it's another book that's being run by our literacy consultant. And it's happening after school. Again, it's voluntary for our teachers. So we're doing our best to try and improve our scores. And we're hoping, since our dip wasn't too bad when you have a chance to look at the data, that our end of the year scores are going to be strong. But again, I do want to encourage if anybody is available, so they know you're all very interested in the pilots that we're doing and how they're working with kids. The teachers are going to present little short presentations for all staff so they can get a sense of what's happening in the classroom, what the teachers like about the program, what the teachers don't like about the program, and any suggestions they might have about future implementation if we chose to go with that program, full scale. And then in the afternoon, there's time for the teachers to look at all the different materials, so it's more not piloting. But that would be a very good presentation if anybody wants to come today. And the other thing I'd ask to just talk about is our dropout rate. So this is just a quick chart that shows you students who left early. So those would be students who technically we consider to drop out. And then we have some information on transfers as well. And our last links report. Again, this is a slide that lets you know for quarter two, where we're at for both the middle school and high school for our dispositions of communicator, collaborator, self-directed, creative thinker, and pretty much thinker. So you can see what percentages of our kids received a three or four in that area from teachers. We're looking pretty solid in that area. That is it for my slide. Questions?
Carrie, the students that are identified as struggling from the start of the year till now, is that, is that, that number decreasing or staying stable?
It's slightly decreased. I can pull those numbers so you can see it by grade level if you'd like me to have that for you next week. When we had the data meeting, we did drop down a few groups and a couple of grade levels. We did not increase in any grade level. So I can tell you that decreased, but the exact number, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
Were you going to give us a summary of the March 17th work pilot reviews, the teachers, like what people...
Yeah. Well, right now, what they're doing is they're filling out a Google form. So each teacher that's piloting something, the Google form asks them a variety of questions. So all of them, you've got class size and special education students. How did their implementation go? Were they able to start right on chapter one? Or was it the kind of thing, which we did have with some of our pilots, where teachers had to start, had to go back and do a little bit of legwork before they could start into the program because the kids needed some background information before they started. So all of that information that I'm going to share with you, that'll be on a spreadsheet, so you can have that. But I do think, you know, and I'll make summaries of what the teachers talk about. But I think if anybody could, it's just a great experience to hear it from the teacher themselves, which is why we do the pilots. That way, our staff can really say, I tried this and it did not work well at all. I really didn't see the gains that I wanted to see in my kids. I don't feel that this program is helpful. Or, you know, I can't believe how great my kids are doing with this. It's really been a game changer. And all that information will help us decide at the end of the year where we want to go. But yes, I can provide you summaries for anybody who can get them.
When is that happening?
March 17th. So that, sorry. It'll start, we'll have a little intro from 8:00 to 8:30, and then at 8:30, the presentations will start. They'll probably go from, right now I'm booking at 8:30 to 11:30 because we have a number of pilots for people to project on. It might not take three hours, but that's on the budget.
Okay. Anything else?
You know where I live.
We have some thank you notes. Does for us, okay, well. Particularly, I don't want to talk about, I want to thank Ms. Myers from Lake Mountain Realty for generous donation. $1,695.25 to pay for Stu Neal's debt at DJA and Kixaki Elementary Schools in Des Moines. Thank you for that. And we thank the Roeburg family for donations $30,000 to the CA Youth Tennis Programs. We thank the family for that. And we wanted to thank the two young people that came to present the Flex program to us last week. Those were letters. We have no community reports tonight. Mr. Squire, your updates?
Just wanted to provide some updates on our 2030 destination. Kind of our roadmap for this decade began in 2020, pre-COVID, pre-numbers. And we served on that community life task force for that. So just wanted to give you kind of where we are with regards to some of those biomarkers. Remember, there was four possibilities that we are envisioning to become reality by the end of 2030. And we created some, what are they going to look like? So if this possibility became a reality, what would it might look like? And here's what some of those look likes are. And the first slide, our possibility, we talked about increasing the amount of early childhood program. And you're all aware, we now have three pre-K programs going in our school for that. So we're excited about that operation. And thanks to Dr. Lulane, Dr. Merzmann, a little help too, and giving a grant. So we'll state that it's helping fund that. 54 kids in it right now. Early childhood program in the sense of pre-K. We haven't done any action on that as of yet. We're still having conversations about it. The same with adult training as well. Wellness opportunities. This year, we have a full-time fitness coordinator here in our fitness room here in the school, which has increased tremendously the amount of usage by our students and student athletes after school. And this last week or two weeks ago, she also now is offering fitness classes for our employees. So the next step, which will be this spring, is we are going to be offering before-school and after-school opportunities for our community members to access our fitness room as well. So there will be more updates on that as we work through that. So we're excited about that to allow our community to utilize our facilities here more often. We have local healthcare partnerships, no action still on that. We continue to try to reach out to our partners to help bring them in and to work on that concept of having a community wraparound services here in our schools. Parent education, we offer monthly online webinars on a variety of topics that parents can access. If they sign up, they can receive the library of webinars. So if they can't make that night, they can go back and watch and record it. We also have minimally quarterly events, what come live events. Mrs. Dyer has been spearheading that campaign on different wellness activities, et cetera, for both families and students. So that's continuing to grow and move forward. And as far as expanding library, food services, before and after school, we have worked on that yet as well. Part of the timeline, yes, for the entire decade. Part of the timeline, yes, for the entire decade as we move forward. Good progress towards making possibility one, reality. Possibility two, community partnerships established. Certainly, this year, we're partnering with the Sheriff's Department to provide an SRO here on Kixaki Campus each day. We continue with our partnership with Athens PD, Don Edjar is one example of that. We also have partnerships that we have already previous to when this plan was put in place, but we're still sustaining that with the county. It provides several layers of mental health services as well as twin counties as well. It also provides services. So we continue to look for ways to build those partnerships, not just with the counties, but also with private organizations as well. Student earning college credit or CT certification. We've mentioned this before in the class of twenty-two, every student who graduated had taken at least one college-level course or finished a CT exam patient post. So that's really exciting. The board has been supportive of this. And this year, Mr. Earl is working on making sure the senior class have all also enrolled in at least once a senior class has been paid for as well as they can have college credit. Our goal is when kids receive their high school diploma, they will also receive a college transcript at the same time in June at the stadium. So that's what we're aiming for as well. So we're excited about that progress. And we keep getting nice feedback back from graduates who have graduated early. That's one point. Who's this here? What, the IC?
Connor Wood.
Connor, Connor Wood, yeah. So he was able to graduate a semester early or went to college, which I'm sure his parents were happy, because he knows the tuition and room board costs at IC. So we're excited, you know, things like that. So anecdotal evidence that, you know, the credits, because he had earned a lot of credits here in high school before he graduated, so he was very thankful and appreciative of those opportunities. As a parent, I can say the same thing. Flexible daily, weekly, yearly schedules, the Flex program, you had a presentation last week on that. So again, an opportunity where kids maybe aren't necessarily following the traditional schedule of the day, right? But they're coming here, they're learning, they're reaching our standards to be successful. Grade configurations, et cetera, we can have those conversations. So just that. Readiness indicators, again, twice annual meetings with grades four and eight for them to, the students can go right in and check how they're meeting our college life and career and academic indicators from our dashboards. The students can go in, see how they're doing, but also indicate whether they're meeting some of them outside of school as well, and they can be checked off with their school counselors. Again, we're looking to increase the number of students who at graduation will be recognized, which we've been doing now for several years. We want to increase the number of kids who are being recognized for either being life, career, college-ready, or all three or a combination of four. We think those are much better indicators than a test score and we seem to be getting more and more evidence of that being the case as we've progressed post-pandemic, as colleges are looking more and more at even looking at test score and becoming SAT optional, for instance, is one example. Realizing standardized tests do not tell the story of who our kids are. And standard-based reporting of progress, that's on our timeline, just start next year to have, start having those conversations. Where we do report out our report cards, it's truly about the learning standards and not some of the more things that don't make a lot of sense. Some examples of that are happening right now, that our pre-K teachers are talking about using digital badges and badging to, instead of report cards, to communicate to parents and to the kids how they're progressing through the pre-grade standards. And our kindergarten teachers are also interested and looking at that as well, in that direction. So excited about that. Possibility three, not so much here, but no, we want all our students to have confidence in themselves, become strong advocates for themselves and others. So this June fifth will be our first showcase of student success, right? Where our plan is that all students, K-12, pre-K-12, will be here at different times to showcase something that they've done very well at while in school in the past year. It could be anything from a student playing an instrument or showing off a really well-done science experiment and everything in between, right? For that, so it's our first attempt at that. Think science fair, but much larger in that regard. So everybody will be invited. We're looking to make this a celebration of learning here at Kixaki Athens and really, you know, be an opportunity for us to come together, the school community, and see all the wonderful things our kids are doing under the guidance of two of the other teachers on board that, so we're excited how that will work. Provide students with a goal perspective based on empathy, again, future work. Every time going, but we want to be more purposeful in how we do that. Students demonstrating readiness for life and career, like I mentioned earlier, about recognition at graduation. And students building authenticity for working in teams. So that's one of the foundations of a project-based learning environment where students are learning through a project-based sequence of events culminating usually with some type of challenge or project they work on and present and showcase for that. Currently, our goal had been up until last year that all students would be given at least one project, you know, basically each year. Now we're looking to give that to two as far as the latest target goes and by twenty-twenty-five, three each year, projects per year. They can be interdisciplinary, across many subjects, they can be specifically within one subject for them. We feel this hands-on, student-directed, student-centered approach, other individually or collaboratively with other students, replicates better what they're going to experience at the college level as well as in the workplace. Whether they go straight to work or to college, working in isolation has kind of disappeared. We want to make sure our kids are prepared and have a good understanding of what that is like before they get there. And finally, possibility four, emotional skills, persevere, multi-tier students.
Systems of support.
Systems of support has been updated and implemented, all right? It's a continuous process for that. It's kind of RTI and social emotional learning and emotional support combined for that. I think we all realize, you know, kids, if they have kids hard before you can have their minds, we want to make sure we're focused on both of those. So again, a whole child, everyone can be successful in that regard. And what do we do, again, when kids are struggling, right? We collectively work together, come up with interventions as soon as we can and responsive to that child's needs so they can get back in to the flow of things as we go forward. Mentioned confidence, presenters, assistive learning, that's all over on our links goals. I mentioned the student showcase for success. Competency in critical thinking, the four C's, critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, being self-directed. If you're a parent, you see that on your child's report cards each marking period. And Carrie mentioned a little bit earlier where we're at right now, grades, middle school, high school. So seventy percent of our kids right now, we're demonstrating being effective collaborators, seventy-two effective communicators. Sixty-seven percent of our kids are creative thinkers, seventy-two have demonstrated being critical thinkers, and seventy-two are demonstrating that they're self-directed for that. So the, our goal ultimately is to get a hundred percent of our kids there, having the opportunity. Now, what that means, too, we have to also provide them opportunities to demonstrate those skills and attributes as well. It may not be every class, every day, but over a cycle of the year. And so our kids should have those opportunities, whether it's a first grader or a senior, should have opportunities to demonstrate those attributes. They're at the top of the list of anybody you talk to post-secondary, whether it's a college admissions person, whether it's a human resources person at a company, these are what they're looking for. No one has said, and no one is saying, we're looking to see how the kid did on his trig algebra reading exam. So maybe in trig algebra class, that's important, but not on the exam. So, so again, we think, are focusing on these dispositions and they're going to help our kids be successful in later what they choose to do in their lives. And teachers modeling and prioritizing these, you know, we haven't really had any, you know, teachers are doing it, but we want to be more purposeful and formal in how we do that, right? So we know we're not missing, you know, there are not gaps along the way of curriculum lines. Any questions on that? So again, it's about the twenty-thirties, we're not there yet, but I think we're making a lot of progress. A lot of these actions are already in place or happening, just sustaining them, making them better, you know, doing grow.
On the project-based learning models or projects that kids do, how do, how do we track to make sure no one's missed those opportunities? How does the staff track that?
Well, the teachers are meeting during our PLT time in the morning and elementary, you know, the grade, like, you know, they've been doing it for several years now, you know, so the second grade, they have like a grade level project. You know, at the high school level, they need these grade level teams and the same thing. Say, who's going to have a project that can encompass all kids, but not all kids might not take biology for instance, right? So that's where it gets a little more tricky, where Mr. Burrow will step in and just make sure that we're doing that. That's, that's the conversations we need to have more of, to make sure that's not happening. But I think last year, we, as a district, we were, over ninety-five percent of our kids at least completed one project during the school year. So it's happening. So we want to make, now it's got to be two, so now we've got to really be a little bit more.
And that information and data goes where? What administrator looks at that?
Principals look at it, comes through Carrie and me as well. Another thing, just to put it on the agenda here, just wanted to quickly just address some of the recent events. The board's aware that sent a message out to all of our families and staff earlier tonight regarding some of the incidences that happened here recently. I'm not going to get into the, our incident in the middle school that happened on the twenty-seventh of January, you know, no one's going on with that. I do want to just kind of begin, take a moment to acknowledge, you know, that we had a social media post that was put up by an employee here. It was taken down immediately after, people alerted us through comments that it was viewed as a racist comment, so it was taken down. We immediately began, you know, kind of investigating what happened, what took place, what was happening, the intent, et cetera. Our school district attorney assisted me in that process as well. And that's, I'm going to say about what we're doing with employees, employee in that regard. I also consulted our school district attorney in regards to, you know, comments that were continuing on our, on our social media feed that, you know, what could we do with those? Some of them that were, I know, making our families uncomfortable, especially the families with kids who were in those photos who communicated to us that they had asked us to take those down, which we did. Also, working with our administrative team, I'm making the following recommendations, we're implementing them as we speak, literally, we already have. We're going to accelerate the timeline for all employees to receive additional training and ongoing training in a variety of areas so that we can, again, make sure that everybody's feeling welcome when we come into our schools, our families, our students, our staff, et cetera. We had begun doing that, we're just going to accelerate it a little bit more. We partnered with Arber, which is a regional group, Questar three BOCs, and we also partnered with many groups in the capital region, provide that training and begin ongoing, it's not one and done. We're implementing procedures that include a two-step process for social media posts. So we'll have a second set of eyes on posts before they head up into the, why we're a web that used to be called for that. And we're also going to be limiting comments on most posts to move forward. We're also going to increase utilization of our website and our live feeds, all right, to our school community about the events, celebrations and happenings that are taking place in our schools. I think the board certainly knows, has seen the presentations throughout the year and all the years, of all the great things that are going on in our schools, and we think that's what reflects who we are here at CA. And we continue to celebrate those things through our, through our social media channels, through our website and live feed as we go forward. And that's accessible to anybody, all right? You can even have the app on your phone so you can get a ding every time, you know, a post comes up from the middle school, you know, about an event or something that took place there. So it's not really limiting what, the news, if you will, but it's going to, just gives another avenue to provide it to our school community. You know, again, it's, I'm sorry, I know everyone's sorry, you know, for the heartache that this post has caused us here, our students, our staff, our parents and community. And I just can ask for our school community to provide us grace as we continue to work towards meeting the needs of all our children. So we're fostering that growth, so all kids feel they belong here by a CA. And this work is continuous, it does not just stop tomorrow, all right? And in order for that to happen, you know, we're going to continue to provide ourselves training, continue to reach out to people to make sure we're going in the right direction. And again, our ultimate goal is, is so everyone, our staff, our kids, our families feel valued and so everyone feel that they belong in our schools. That's what we're aiming for and that's what we'll continue to do as we see this as a learning experience and we'll work on it and continue to grow as a learning community.
Can you put a post?
This is posted on the website, but I think you just said you, put it in a more articulate way, but yeah. On our website, it was also sent to all of our staff and families earlier tonight.